6:39, we have called a regular session of the Air Shirley Regional School District School Committee to order. It's Tuesday, January 5th. Those attending tonight's meeting should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by ASRSD. And any audience members who wish to record any part of the meeting must inform the chair, who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the Mass Wiretap Statute. The listings of matters are those not reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up tonight for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Good evening, everyone. If we could do the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Joe, looks like you're up and ready to go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, we should do a roll call, since we are coming back into this meeting. Michelle, would you do the roll call, please?
Mr. DeForge?
Here.
Mrs. Granger?
Here.
Mr. Leoni?
Here.
Mr. Quinty?
Here.
Mrs. Reschutz?
Here.
Mrs. Simmons?
Here.
We are on Item 7, which is our high school representative. Cheyenne, are you with us tonight?
Yes. Hello.
Hi, Cheyenne.
Hi. So, last time we talked, we, the winter decision went through that we can do winter sports, and I play varsity girls' basketball, so I'm just gonna give some things that, what it's like there, so you guys can see what it's like. So, everyone is wearing a mask the entire time. We are allotted around three mask breaks, socially distanced outside of the gym. And if you feel as though you need another mask break, like throughout the drills, because wearing a mask is really tiring while running, like more than I thought it was gonna be, you're allowed to step out whenever you feel like you have to. We are assigned our own balls, which are numbers written on all the basketballs, and only you can touch that. And when we do community drills, we share a ball. We pull out those balls, and then, once we're done with that drill, we roll them over, someone cleans them, puts them back on the rack, and if we have to do another community drill, we grab clean balls, so we're not reusing dirty balls. Today was our sixth practice, and we had like four practices before break, and we had one yesterday, one today, and a few later. And our first game is next Monday, so probably next session I'll be able to talk to you about how the games go. If you have any questions about basketball, I can answer those if you want.
You must be excited to be back playing, certainly.
I definitely am. It's, I definitely wasn't like trying to think if we were gonna have a game, a season this year, but I was definitely really hoping, because I really love playing basketball on the team that we have, so I'm very excited to be back.
Well, good.
Yeah. Okay, so, the...
Go ahead, sorry.
Okay. So, today was my first day back in school since break, and it really felt the same as before break. Break, even though it was 12 days, to me, only felt like a weekend, so it just feels like the same as being back from before. And then, for senior stuff, this, it all, this definitely a different year for being a senior. A lot of kids have been applying. I personally, since last time we talked, I think I applied to one, and now I'm applied to nine, and I have a few more to go through. And, yeah, it's really exciting seeing like, oh, so, because kids that did early decision are already getting their acceptance letters, and I'm truly excited seeing kids get those, which is like making kids want to apply, which, I know a majority of our grade has applied, but it is still stressful, like regular senior year stress. I haven't started my fastas yet, and I gotta start that, because that's very stressful right there, but, yeah. Yeah, that's all I got for you guys, if you have any questions.
Well, thank you very much. I think, I think, as much as we love seeing you, I think you have to tell us what your dog's name is.
Her name is Suki.
There you go. Thank you. I know she would be upset if she wasn't introduced, so, I think we would find out. Anything else, any comments anybody would like to have?
Cheyenne, I know, maybe there could be a reminder sent to share the colleges that kids recently heard from, because I know a lot of, or a good number of kids have heard over break, you know, colleges they were accepted to, to get out the more accurate list.
I don't know all of them. I know some kids got into WPI for early action. I know some kids, I know one of my friends got into Pittsburgh State for basketball. Um...
Now, tell Mr. Christie to make an announcement.
Okay, okay. That'll do.
That's the counseling office to send us a list to.
Yeah.
Can I ask you, Cheyenne, a quick question?
Sure.
So, Cheyenne, how do, how are you finding it worked as far as like SATs? Were you able to get in SAT? I know you probably couldn't take them last spring, and I don't know if you were able to take them this fall, so how, how is that working as far as college applications? And were you able to, to get it in?
So, I was signed up for the first, like the March SAT, and quarantine started the day before my first SAT was supposed to go, and then I was pushed back to the next month, and then to the next month, so I was denied three times, and then at that point, I was done. So, I didn't end up taking them, but I, a majority of this, like, a really good amount of the schools are now test optional, so I haven't had a problem with applying to colleges.
Okay.
I only, I only know very few kids that did SATs, well, not very few, I know a good amount, but like not, more than half, it was like less than half kids did SATs, even if that.
Yeah, I was curious how that worked with this senior class, because you wouldn't have been able to take them in the spring, and then even the fall, I'm not even sure if they offered them, so I didn't know how schools were handling that, or if you felt like, you know, there was any pressure, what kids were feeling, because they couldn't get it in, and were nervous about it, or...
I think, Michelle, I can probably answer that. I don't know one college that's requiring SATs. There are programs, like going into engineering or something, they want a math test, but even UMass Amherst has gone test optional until 2023.
Okay, so even, so there's special provisions because of this whole SAT debacle?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, because of that whole equity thing, because now, it's, you know, there are, there are exams happening, but it's, it's not enough for everyone.
Right, right.
So, yeah.
All right, I was just curious. Thank you, thank you, Cheyenne, congratulations on your applications, and hope you're getting some good responses.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. We appreciate you being here.
Cheyenne, I will give you the, the two pieces of advice I give to Catherine all the time, is she's in the same boat that you're in, and in as in as that. I know everybody wants to go to a good school, but the real secret is there aren't any bad schools, so they're all gonna be good choices. And the other part is, you're really only committing to the first semester of your freshman year. So, everybody tries to get the right fit, and tries to pick the right major, and your only job is to work hard to get in somewhere, and do as well as you can, and be flexible as you get there to make good choices.
That is very true. Thank you.
And hopefully, by the time you get there, it'll be as normal as possible.
Hopefully.
Catherine is missing. Your class deserves that.
Catherine is missing all you guys on the basketball team, but she can now do a, she's got her six dives, and she just completed her one and a half back dive, so she's pretty excited.
Ooh, that's exciting.
Wow, nice.
We miss her, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Let us know.
One more thing.
See you, Cheyenne. Oh, sure.
Hold on, one second.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
So, just, I loved hearing your enthusiasm, not about, you know, not only about basketball, but just coming back to school and getting, you know, starting the head towards the warmer weather. And I wish you and your teammates, and all of our sporting teams, you know, the best of luck, as they start up here in the next couple of weeks, and I hope that your enthusiasm is infectious for all of our students heading towards warmer weather and more fun, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Thank you.
Basketball season.
Thank you very much.
We're glad to have you. Come again. Since Cheyenne did such a nice job for us, can we, no, I guess we can't, just quit. Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have the minutes of...
Public participation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks, Joe. I was just reading, I'm reading across the bottom here. Yes, I'm sorry. Number eight, public participation. We will limit the whole participation to half an hour, and everyone be allowed three minutes. Please introduce yourself and your full address, so that it can go on the record. Thank you very much. Mr. Tebow would handle that for us.
Thanks, Madam Chair. We do have Jake Watkins, who would like to speak. Give me a minute to commission. Hey, Jake, can you hear us, okay?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can. You're on.
Awesome. Good evening. I hope everyone had a nice break. I just had a couple of questions real quick. So, I was curious where I could locate videos of the executive session? From my understanding of the state law, the executive sessions are to be posted public, whether a decision was made, or if it had no effect on school business, and kind of like related to that as well. Where can I find a voting history for each member on all matters that the school committee voted on? And if it's not like a link or anything, could it be provided by the next school committee meeting?
I would take that for you, Jake. When executive session minutes are released, then they would be made public. If it's ongoing items, they may not be released for a while, and things that, you know, negotiations or something certainly wouldn't be released until all the contracts are signed, for example. And the other thing that I think you asked was, that would be in all the minutes that we've had. So, I don't know what you would think about, the minutes are, are the minutes on the website? Yes, so the minutes are on the website, so you can go back through them that way.
Awesome. All right, cool, cool. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. And your address, sir?
Oh, 33 Shirley Street.
In?
Air.
Air?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
At this time, Madam Chair, there is no one else requesting to speak?
I don't think we threw too many people off. We didn't start very late due to the executive session, but we will, we will move on. Sorry, I almost skipped it. Nine is the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. We have the minutes. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none. The, that's December 16th, I'm sorry, December 16th, 2020, regular session minutes for release. Is everyone all set? Okay. The next thing is the warrant memo, and we have five items on the warrant memo. We have AP warrant number 1088 dated 12/11/2020 for $696.57, which was for merchant services. We have warrant number 1089 dated 12/11/2020 for $1,419.84. That was a biweekly AP warrant for FY21. Warrant number 1093 dated 12/25/2020 for 296,287.19. That was FY21 biweekly AP warrant. Payroll warrant number 13 dated 12/18/2020 for $733,423.71. This is biweekly payroll. Payroll warrant number 14 for 12/31/2020, $708,918.26, and that's a biweekly payroll. Michelle, is there any questions or any additions anyone would like to make? Hearing none, could I have a motion, please, on consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, one, two, three, go!
Ladies first. Michelle.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented on our agenda this evening.
Second.
Third, second? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Michelle, would you take a roll call, please?
Mr. DeForge?
Hi.
Mrs. Granger?
Hi.
Mr. Leoni?
Mr. Leoni?
Hi.
Mr. Quinty?
Hi.
Mrs. Reschutz?
Hi.
Mrs. Simmons?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and it's unanimous to approve the consent agenda. Moving on to number 10, new business, Coronavirus Relief Fund, and Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. The grant report by Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three coronavirus grants from the feds that is one-time money, but the first one, and the largest one, is the Yesser Grant. The reports, I believe, are in the packet. You can see where we are year-to-date. Yesser Grant was for $506,980, and that was, we, the grant was written for staff and stipends, stipends for the Return to School Advisory Board, services for technology, supplies for technology, and PPE, cleaning equipment, cleaning supplies, furniture, plexiglass, tents, all that good stuff. That was all included when they were writing that Yesser Grant. The second grant is the School Reopening Grant, or the Coronavirus Relief Fund. That was initially, that one and the Remote Technology Grant were both initially to end or expire, or have all the funds expended on December 31st. That's been extended with the package that was passed by the President on December 27th, so that, those grants will also carry through to the end of this school year, June of 2021. We have booked out completely the reopening grant in anticipation of having that all spent. Most of that was spent on supplies for reopening school, all of the tents that we rented, plexiglass, furniture, lots of new desks, lots of tables, lots of TV trays, PPE, and technology. There was some money in there for staff as well, and we paid a remote technology teacher and one of the remote first-grade teachers at LAW out of that grant, or half their salaries for half the year anyways. The third grant was the Remote Technology Grant. That was the smallest of the three, that was $34,644, and that was for internet connectivity and technology, iPads and mobile hotspots, so we could get internet to all the families that not necessarily had it. The total of all three, like I said, was 906,000 federal funds, which was one-time money for this year. We will continue to spend out the Yesser Grant, and we have quite a bit left in the Yesser Grant, according to the budget reports. Of the 500 to 6,000, we have 293,000 still to go, but that is through June 30th of 2021, so we have plenty of time, and we'll have plenty of expenses. And there's about 6,900 in the Remote Technology Grant that we'll also use for technology, because we'll be purchasing more Chromebooks and initial and supplementary equipment to go with those Chromebooks. So, I just wanted to let you know where we were with them, and that it is one-time money, but much needed this year with everything that's going on.
Anyone?
Yeah, I have two questions. Bill, if you don't mind, what was the amount for the internet hotspots? How much should we spend on that? Sorry, I...
No problem. So, the hotspots was included in the 28,644, so it looks like we spent 21,766 on iPads and hotspots. I don't have that broken out in front of me, but I can get you those numbers. I think the iPads were a larger chunk, and then the hotspots, I think, was something like about four grand for the hotspots.
Bill, if you don't mind, I can help out a little bit.
Yeah, Mr. Tebow?
Just so you know, the hotspots are a one-year subscription. We didn't purchase the hardware, we're leasing them for a year, and the total cost was approximately $11,000 for 50 hotspots.
Okay. And are those working well for those who have them? Or are they...
I have heard they are. Not gonna lie, it is hit or miss. It's much like a cellphone.
Absolutely.
It's only as good as the area that you're in. But we have supplied, I want to say about 25 of them to date, and just got a request for a few more today, actually.
Oh, cool. No, and, one, I'm glad to hear that we're able to do it sort of on a yearly basis, and that it's something that's not an incredibly large cost, because something tells me we're probably gonna need them for part of the year next year as well. And I want to make sure that we can, you know, if the one-time monies don't come back, that we can somehow fit that in to make sure that all of our friends who can, who do need that extra boost can get there, so.
Yeah, it's been critical, obviously, for those kids that don't have any service, but it's gotten a lot of families online, not only for school, but for, for other things that they've needed, job searches, things like that.
Well, that's great. That's great. I'll part in the community. Cool. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
I just actually have a quick question that is not related to the grants, but Mr. Tebow, since you're here and chatting with us, I'd ask. So, we kind of went to a one-to-one district-wide sooner than we ever anticipated. Is the thought to continue that now, moving forward, or how do we see that?
Well, I can't speak directly to that in terms of one-to-one without the COVID restrictions in place, but obviously with any type of remote learning in effect, we'll have one-to-one.
Yeah.
Through 12, but if and when things change, you know, we'd have to have some discussions of supporting one-to-one throughout the district.
Yeah, okay. It just dawned on me while we were having this conversation.
I, I know Mary and I have spoke in the past, and Charlie, about going beyond high school, getting them in the middle school prior to COVID. So, I would think at the very least, as long as we could support it, we would do that. Anything I'm not sure of.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would just add that they all have the, everybody has a Chromebook now, and we are a one-to-one district, so I would imagine that we would continue with that, since we've already distributed them to everybody in the district.
Okay, thank you.
So, with the hotspots and everything, we feel that we have everybody 100% covered, because I know there's a lot of places that there's a lot of inequality, so, but it sounds like we have it in pretty good shape, at least. That's what I've been telling public.
Yeah, no, the way, the way that we've handled the hotspots, rather than broadcast it to everybody, we've had teachers basically screen their, or ask their students, you know, about internet service who doesn't have it, and anyone who's in need of it, no questions asked, you know, we get them one right away. I think we even have a family that is borderline homeless, that we provided Chromebooks and a hotspot for, for them to...
Good.
Find some things.
No, that's, that's excellent. That's excellent. And I know how you and your staff have worked to make this happen, so thank you very much. Keeping our education up to quality is critical.
You're welcome, and...
We know what, we know everything you did, so thank you.
All kinds of good help, that's for sure. You're welcome, thanks.
Anyone else for, Bill, or for Mike?
Thank you for the update, Bill.
Yep, really great to know. Moving on, we have Superintendent's Report, item number 11 on the agenda.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent Malone.
Thank you.
For us, the district updates, the, I want to remind everyone that we will now be issuing our COVID-19 data dashboard on Fridays in the school system, so this Friday, we will be publishing any cases that we have in the school system this week. I had a lengthy conversation today with Jim Greffey from the Shobor Board of Health, and so he's authorized me to provide this information. He told me that, you know, about four days after Christmas, they did have approximately 110 cases, but he has said that in the last couple of days, cases. Now, remember that the Shobor Associated Board of Health serves 16 communities, and in the couple of days, the, the cases have gone down to what they were seeing before the holiday, and they're seeing cases of 40 to 50 per day among the 16 communities. And he, again, reiterated to me that there are a lot of cases. Federal prison, which is on Devens, and those cases are reported in the year numbers, and then we have the state prison in Shirley, and then those numbers are reported in Shirley. And he talked about that, where they are seeing multiple cases in a household, and he talked about that, you know, so he represents 16 communities, that the schools have done an excellent job at keeping safe, and, you know, we are able to keep kids safe in school, and, you know, he said, again, it's, it really key is the six-foot physical distancing and wearing a mask. So, I appreciated my discussion with him today. He was going to send me the numbers, but he was going to meeting, and he didn't know if he would get to it today, so I'm sure he will forward that to me, he's able. The other good news, we, everyone knows we have the COVID-19 vaccine, and the school nurses have been added to Phase 1, along with healthcare workers. So, Phase 1 is December 2020 through February 21, and they haven't got specific information yet when they will be able to get the vaccination, but the nurse at DPH told our nurse leader that there'll be more information to come on that, so that's good news as well. The, you may have seen in the news today, I'm gonna move, Mike, in the drive, there is a document on MCAS. Just to highlight, yeah, there it is, yeah.
Mary, can I, Mary, can I have us ask a question first?
Oh, sure.
Last time you mentioned, mentioned testing. I wonder if you could, you could update us on, on testing?
Sure. Testing the school system, so I think I had mentioned to the committee, the Department of Education was working on piling the pool testing in school districts, and I had submitted our district's name, participated in that, so I'm still waiting to hear back from the Department of Education, you know, if we have been accepted into that program, and we could bring that to the district. And certainly, okay, go ahead.
And that would, and that would mean...
It was late.
COVID testing for when and how often?
You know, I don't have a lot of details on it yet, Joe, from what the Department of Education is providing, but I have listened into some other districts. I, I think I told you, I often watch the Yale School Committee when I can, as I always learn something, and they're gonna do some pool testing with a company. That model that they were discussing was, so pool testing is you test, you know, a cohort. So, their model they were looking at was testing a classroom, a cohort in a classroom, along with a teacher. Of course, it's all voluntary, and, you know, we have to have parents' permission, that's one model. And then, in that, that model they were looking at with that company, it was a self-test, self-swab, and, and then I know of other companies that will come in, and you can get your school nurses to administer the screening. So, I'm looking into it. I was hoping I'd get more from Desi, but I, I haven't yet, but I will keep you updated on that.
Thank you.
So, on MCAS, I'm just gonna, I have to write myself a note, I'm sorry. On MCAS, you may have heard, it was all in the news today, they have made some modifications to the testing for this spring. The first key one is the modifying the competency determination for the current seniors, and that the commission is gonna recommend that the graduation requirement of MCAS be modified in English Language Arts and Math for students in the class who have not yet earned their competency determination, meaning passing the MCAS. So, the recommend, the recommended modification is to allow students to receive... to receive their competency determination by passing an approved course and demonstrating competency in the subject in lieu of a qualifying MCAS score. So if a senior needs to pass the math MCAS, the modification would be that they would have to take an approved course and then pass that course in lieu of the, of the MCAS score, MCAS test. They're going to shorten the MCAS testing time for grades three through eight. You know, at this time, again, they're not going to cancel it, but they're going to significantly reduce the testing time. And each student will take only a portion of each MCAS assessment in each subject. They feel that we still need a diagnostic tool to measure the learning. Particularly, as you know, you know, keeping kids in school, we're all concerned about the learning loss between the whole emergency closure last spring, and of course, the hybrid remote models that we are now in. And so they feel that this will preserve the validity and reliability of the test at the school district and state levels. Scroll down, please, Mike, accountability piece. Then it's, he's calling it accountability leaf. He's not going to name or recommend to the board any new underperforming, a chronically underperforming district of schools in the upcoming year. The extending the access, that's the test for the English learners, testing for their English language proficiency. I had already reported that, they extended the window until May. And then finally, the MCAS biology test. They provided school districts flexibility in scheduling that. We may offer the biology MCAS to first-time ninth graders in June, instead of, in addition to offering it in February. So we're looking forward, you know, to the Board of Education approving what the Commission of Education is recommending to them with respect to the MCAS assessment. Any questions?
They, they didn't say anything in here about remote learners. The last time you presented this, it indicated that remote learners would need to come into the building to take, to take the test, which I think is ridiculous. They've chosen to be remote, or their district has, and making them come in to take a test does not make any sense to me. Where do they stand on that? Have you any information?
No, memo, I'm looking at the, you know, of course, it was a cover page I didn't provide you, but they haven't provided us that information. The cover letter just talks about the sudden shift to remote learning and the continuation of hybrid remote learning. This school year has likely had significant learning loss for students around the country. And the extent of the learning loss in the Commonwealth is not yet known. And the department believes the MCAS test is a crucial diagnostic tool to promote student success and educational equity, and remain committed to administering the assessment this spring, while recognizing the need for adjustments and flexibility. So they haven't addressed that piece yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just had a quick question, and I'm sure you probably don't know the answer to this, because this just came out. But when they talk about for the class of 2021 and that approved course that kids would be able to take, I'm assuming it's something that the district is going to be able to determine as an approved course? Because at this point, kids have already taken or signed up for all the classes that they can sign up for, so it doesn't.
Yeah, they didn't specify, but I would, and I know we have maybe, I don't know if it's like four or five seniors that, you know, would need to have taken the, the MCAS. So I think, I don't know if it has to be a course. And this year, it could be a qualifying mathematics course, or an English course that maybe they took as a junior. So that wasn't specified, yeah.
Okay.
And I'm sure we'll be able to.
Yeah, I would hope that they would leave it to the district's discretion, because.
Right.
Okay, sorry to interrupt you.
No problem, thank you. Mike, do you want, I just wanted to provide you a snapshot, two snapshots. One of the 2021 student attendance, Mike, could you call up that document, please? It's in the drive. So what we did was, we went back to the first day of school, September 16. And of course, we were in Phase 1 at that time. And so if you look at the top of this, these are the Phase 1 averages. The average of absenteeism per day, the attendance rate. It goes by school, Paige Hilltop, and Laura White, in middle school and high school. And then the district cumulative averages, if you will, for Phase 1. So if you look at the districts, you had 17.6 students average out per day, and that was an attendance rate of 95.34%. And so the benchmark or the threshold for attendance, which was under the chronically absent, absentee accountability, was, is 95% or higher. And, and then we went into Phase 2, we have seen a bit of a drop, minor. Well, I don't know if it was minor, but you can see that there's about 25 students absent per day. And that attendance rate is 93% since November 5. And we have to remember, in this Phase 2, we have three really models going on. We have the hybrid model, where the students are in-person for two days. They're all remote on Wednesdays, which tomorrow is our remote day. And then some of those students, depending on the teacher, could be asynchronous on their off-cohort day. So for example, today, the pride group was in, and they're in on Tuesdays and Fridays. So the Panther group, particularly at the middle school, some of those students would be in an asynchronous model. At the high school, so that's one model. And then we have the Remote Learning Academy students, and those are the students that are fully remote all week. And then we have, at the high school, they are live streaming in, when they have their in-person cohort, they are live streaming in the students on the off-cohort day, as well as Remote Learning Academy students. So, you know, it's, it's tricky, and it's challenging. And, but I want to commend the staff, because they are managing this really well. And I think doing a really good job. And I'm going to show you a brief overview of a parent survey we sent out before the holiday break. So all of these numbers are here, I just gave this to you today. So I certainly don't, you know, if you have any questions on it now, but I, we could bring it up again at the next meeting. Or if anybody has any questions, or would like to speak to me personally about it, certainly, you know, call me. But if you can scroll down, Mike. So what we did was, we gave the attendance for every day through today, January 5. So our rates, you know, mostly in the 90s, which is good. So today, for example, if you go down Phase 2, at the Page Hilltop, we had 25 students absent. We had an attendance rate of 95.11%. At Laura White, we had 15 students out. We had an attendance rate of 95.37%. Over at the middle school, we had 30 students out, 92.74%. And then at the high school, we had 39. The high school attendance typically is lower than the other schools in normal times. But certainly, you know, we, we need to work on getting that number up into the 90s consistently, so.
The math, the math person has, has a question here. It says the number absent at Page Hilltop, 25, number absent, 14, 15, 30, 39. And then the district, 27. That, that doesn't add up. I'm not, where does that number, 27, come from?
It's an average.
An average of what?
An average of all four schools.
Okay, so the average number of kids out at each.
Yes, yeah, yeah, district, yes.
And then that's, and that's an, on all, on average of all of the, okay.
Right.
Okay.
Students absent, yes.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm sorry. So I'm wondering if the, if the absence rate at the high school is because those students are not physically in the building on the day they're supposed to be there? Does that account for, say, for instance, because the high school is live streaming? Most teachers are live streaming? If a student stays home and is logging in, even though they're supposed to be in the building?
No, they would, they would be marked present.
Are you sure? Because I've had days that Emily did that, and gotten a call that she was absent from school. So I just want to caution that I don't know, you know, if that means kids are not attending, or if they're just not attending class, or if they're not in the building when they're supposed to be in the building.
Okay, so just, so your scenario would be that Emily was an asynchronous day, live streaming into her high school classrooms, but you got a call she was absent?
Yeah, like if it was a, say, for instance, it was a day, you know, she's, she's Panther. So say it was a Monday, and she was supposed to be in the building, but she was live streaming from home instead.
Oh, yeah, 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 she would be absent.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. It doesn't necessarily mean that students are not in class, technically. They just may not be in the building. So I'm wondering if that's why you're seeing these lower percentages, or, you know, the percentages you're seeing at the high school being in the 80s, as opposed to some of the other buildings where they're not live streaming, and those kids have to be there in order to get the lesson? Kids at the high school may feel like, I can just livestream in and still get the lesson. So I wonder if that's part of.
Sure, and I, you know. I'll, I'll discuss that with Mr. Christie. That's a good point that you raised, so thank you for raising it. And we'll look at that on these numbers. I do want to point out, in 1217, which was our remote snow day, you know, it was, it wasn't too bad if you go across, it was our first time, so. And I didn't, you know, with that day, there were no, that was a little bit clunky, because the elementary was having a half-day. And so, you know, I wrote, when I sent out the notification, because if you recall, I sent it out early that day, because I knew we would not be able to attend school. And, you know, I didn't get any complaints from parents, or, you know, any calls about people not logging on, or not being able to. So I think it went, it went well. So thank you to the parents as well for, for making that a successful day.
So what did you do at the high school on the 15th?
I know.
That, were you handing out anything? Because that, that's, whatever that was, we need to do that more often.
Right, so that was a, what was that? That must have been a Wednesday?
Was that the popcorn day? Was that the day?
Yeah, yeah.
No, that was the 22nd. You have some low, you have some good attendance on the 22nd also.
Oh, no, the 22nd, no, we did the movie on that Wednesday. So we were out on Thursday, right? The snow day was a Thursday?
The 15th is a Tuesday.
Yeah, no, because we had the movie on Wednesday. Yeah, I don't know, we'll have to talk to Mr. Christie and see if they were giving out any boxes or anything.
I think we gave out, I think we gave out the popcorn that day for the movie.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, it's popcorn day. The movie was the next day, so you could have popcorn.
I think they were getting their scene boxes. Yeah, yes, right, right.
There you go.
That's what it was.
Cheryl, Cheryl, you just have to do that more often, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any more questions?
Very, very interesting.
Yeah, and like I said, you know, you just got it today. So certainly, if you want to look it over and you have any further questions, or I'm happy to. And we'll keep, we'll keep this spreadsheet going.
Can I just, is it possible to add one more column that has last year's for the comparable week? Maybe, even just on the week? Because I know we were keeping track of it for a while there, before we went remote. And it just, it would just be curious for me to see district average year over year.
Yeah, we'll look at that, sure.
You know, it doesn't have to be too granular, but obviously, it's not, you know, I seem to recall that we were, you know, usually in the mid to low 90s for across most of the schools anyway. So it's probably pretty comparable. Um, so it'd be just interesting to see, that's all.
Sure, we can look into adding that data point, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. The next piece, Mike, the cohort snapshot. So I've been providing this to you all along.
Hold on, Mary, let me pull that up.
Yeah, that's okay, take your time, thank you. So this, while Mike's getting it ready, so this is just, is a snapshot in time. This, this particular document tracks the cohort breakdown from December 4 through today. And so we're remaining, you know, pretty, pretty stable. So I can't explain the Laura White. So if you look at the first column, those are the number of students in the hybrid per grade. And that's the breakdown of those students, you know, in the class. And then, like, say for kindergarten, we didn't have anybody move from hybrid, that leave hybrid, or remote. And, but if you go down to grade 2, we had three students move into the hybrid, and two students left the remote. And you say, well, that doesn't add up, but we had a new student register, and that student went into the hybrid. So just, you know, the bottom numbers, we're staying, you know, pretty stable. We did have some movement at the middle school, which the middle school actually had the highest percentage of students in hybrid model. But we did have 12 students move into the remote since December 4. And then at the high school, you know, we, a large percentage of students are in the remote model. And we did have some movement there. And that, down to the homeschool, we've had four families come back. If you can scroll down, please, Mike, you can see, and those grade levels returned from homeschooling back into the district. And then this last chart is giving you our numbers. As you know, our enrollment's down compared to what it was, and as is all districts in the Commonwealth. But what you see, if I go to the last district total as of today, pre-K through 12, we have 1,547 students, and that's K through 12. And then the 1,604 are the pre-K students. So that, the actual total number is 1,604. So I provide you, you know, for informational purposes, and I'll take any questions. Okay.
Anyone?
Nope. All right, the next is a quick review, overview, if you will, of the parent guidance survey that we sent out before the break. And so this does not include any of the qualitative data, meaning the comments. We had many, many comments, which we will certainly code, but we didn't have an opportunity to do this. So the questions, we had 888 respondents. 627 of them were in the hybrid model, 262 were in the remote. And you can see the breakdown of the schools. And one of the questions we asked is, how is your, overall, how is your child doing in Phase 2? So 10% of those said their children were thriving, 43% well, 36% fine, 8% poorly, and 3% struggling. And then, so in, some of you that are parents, if you took the survey, if your child was in the hybrid model, then you've got a set of logic questions related to the hybrid model. If you answered it as the parent of a student in the Remote Learning Academy, then you've got logic questions related to that. So if you could just scroll down a little bit, Mike. So, you know, these are just, you know, snippets of the question, you know, is, is Phase 2 positive? So 87% agree, 13 disagree, feel safe going to school, 95% agree, 5% disagree. The in-person schedule going well, 97 to 3, synchronous going well, 83 to 17. Screen time appropriate, 69 to 31%. And again, so we have comments supporting any of these questions and suggestions that parents would make. And we will be sharing this. We have an administrative meeting every Wednesday. And the administrators in each building will get the detailed report of this. And then we'll, we'll start quoting the comments. Consistent communication, 79% to 21%. The teacher feedback being helpful, so consistent communication, meaning from the teachers. Is the teacher feedback helpful, 85% agree, 50% did not. The access to materials, where the, where the students need to go, is it clear? 87% agree, 13 disagreed. Is the live streaming effective? 75% agree, 25% did not. Asynchronous, understanding the tasks, if you're in an asynchronous cohort. And this is some, maybe some area that we need to work on. And if you recall, the asynchronous is when students are working on their own independently, which is what the Board of Education and Department of Education were looking at, because they felt that there were districts where students were spending too much time in asynchronous learning. And then the amount of work during the asynchronous time, 52% said it was enough, 33% thought it was too much, and 15% thought it wasn't enough. And then the quality of the work, was it appropriate? 68% thought so, and 32% did not. You know, so we look at, so overall, I think the numbers are very good. And the numbers where we have more of a closer split, we're going to look at more closely, and look at the comments, and try to make improvements in those areas. You know, so we look at, so overall, I think the numbers are very good and the numbers where we have more of a closer split, we're going to look at more closely and look at the comments and try to make improvements in those areas. And the next section was on the Remote Learning Academy families. Eighty eight percent feel phase two is very positive. Twelve percent do not. Is the schedule going well? Ninety percent agree. Ten percent did not. The synchronous portion, is it going well? Ninety one percent agree. Nine percent did not. Screen time appropriate? We have a seventy six, twenty four split. Consistent communication, seventy nine, twenty one. And you can see that looking at the Remote Learning Academy and going back to the hybrid, there is a through line about communication and feedback and screen time. So whether you're in the remote or in the hybrid, there were probably, you know, looking at the comments and the feedback that we get that gives us more, more specific information about what the families are seeing with the students is very helpful. Teacher feedback is helpful. Eighty five to fifteen percent. Getting the materials is quite clear. Ninety two percent feel that way. Eight percent did not. The asynchronous tasks, eighty eight percent agree that they're clear and twelve percent did not. And then the amount of work, seventy seven percent felt it was enough, thirteen percent thought it was too much and then ten percent not enough. And then final question is the quality of the asynchronous work appropriate? Eighty eight percent agreed and twelve percent did not. So we, you know, we sent out a lot of surveys. We sent out a survey to students in grades of four through twelve. And so I will, we provide you that information at the next meeting on that survey. Any questions on the survey?
Thank you, Mary. That looks very good. And I think the important thing is your teacher feedback on all of them were in the eighties. So that would be a key component, I would think, with what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, I think you Joyce, I, I agree. I think, you know, overall, we're getting very good feedback from families and on, as we all know, very challenging times in education. The next update, any questions from anyone on this?
I was just going to add, maybe for the next survey, just ask a question about how Zoom conferences went. Personally, they were outstanding for us. And I hope that we can continue to offer that at least for one option going forward. But I would be interested to know how other people felt about doing it.
Sure, that's excellent point, Jonathan. And the principals have all reported that they went really well and the parents really liked them and the, the teachers feel that they had a better conference time with the parent. So I think I will ask that question in the next survey, but you know, all of the qualitative feedback that we've gotten from the schools. And I, again, I, I didn't hear from any parents and neither did the principals, that it didn't work for anyone. So, you know, we assume when we don't hear that maybe that's, you know, that's going well. So that's a great, great point and a great question to ask next.
Thank you. Yeah, like I said, it was, it was outstanding to do it that way. And hopefully it's a little bit more convenient. Maybe you don't have to rush home or rush to the school to get there. So.
Right.
So if we can work it out, we can offer it at least one time per conference season, that, you know, one set of times. That would be awesome.
You know, I, you know, Jim had brought up the point too, you know, after we get through this and, and, and keeping note, mental notes as we go along the way, go along the way here, what have we learned through this epidemic that might work better in education? And certainly I think we're going to see, you know, a culture shift in life and in education and so on and so forth. So that just might be one of them.
Yeah, and it definitely piggybacks on what, you know, Mr. Ulrich, when he did his school improvement plan and the principals gave for their school improvement plan.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. We got word during the break that the flu vaccination deadline was extended. I did include that in my communication to families that I sent out Sunday morning. It's been extended to, through February twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. And so we've communicated that to our parents and I can give you an update the next time and where we stand on the vaccinations, but I did send it up to parents and I just want to reaffirm with parents that they can call their primary care provider and you can also call the Neshoberg Associated Boards of Health to arrange for vaccination through them. And the last.
And I have to tell Dr. Malone.
Sure, yeah.
They were giving flu shots at Target in Nashua last weekend. So I, there's a lot of places to be able to access, access that.
Well, I can say in a personal night, I told all of the teachers this, I got my first flu shot. I've never got one before and I got it and I was fine and I haven't had the flu. So, you know.
Knock on wood.
I lived through it, right? Yes. Okay, I know. All right. So next, now there's a calendar change. So Mr. Christie is on here, but the faculty at the high school voted not to hold midterms this year. And so with that, we are going to cancel the two half days that are scheduled at the high school, January twentieth and January twenty one. And we're going to keep, and that's Wednesday and Thursday. And then Friday is January twenty second, which we're going to keep and have the high school staff join the pre K to eight faculty for professional development. I don't know if you want, you know, the rationale for that from Mr. Christie, but he said he, he had sent out information to families and that, but I just wanted to, to note that calendar change that we wouldn't be holding those half days.
That's a good news, bad news situation for children. No midterms, but now you have full days.
Yeah, I know. But, you know, we'll pick up a few hours, you know, in our, our time on learning and.
I'm, I'm kind of all for that on a regular basis. We've been, where I work, we have been sort of testing the waters for a couple of years about mid-year exams and final exams and leaving it up to departments and teachers on when they want to give more of a summative assessment. Instead of it all fitting into this little box of a couple of days that maybe it makes more sense to have some sort of assessment that's more cumulative at a different time to alleviate that stress for some kids that, you know, exam time is, is stressful and to have five or six of them all, you know, within a few days can, can be overwhelming. So. Anyway, that's, that's something we're, we're doing. We're, we're still collecting data on that, but at least for this year, it makes sense.
Yeah, it does. And, and we'll get, you know, some more time on learning because we know that there's been a lot of disruption, you know, to learning.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I just wanted to remind, sorry, nope. Okay. And I just wanted to remind the committee that we have a two field presentations, one with the Shirley Finn Palm on January nineteenth at six P M. It will be a Zoom meeting. And then to the Board of Selectmen initially on the twenty fifth at six P M. So the twenty fifth is a Monday and I think the nineteenth is a Tuesday. Typically have the days. And then finally, the last piece, talking about college acceptances. So usually, you know, prior to the pandemic, I was giving you a written report, but. So I, I can read them again. We typically, we would talk about the new acceptances, but I'll go over them again. So so far, our college acceptances as of January fourth. Assumption College, Case, Western Reserve University, Old Biscayne College, Embry-Riddle Aminautical University, Endicott College, Pittsburgh State University, Framingham State University, Massachusetts College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences, Northeastern University, Penn State University, Plymouth State University, Regis College, Revere University, Salem State University, University of Maine, University of Massachusetts Lowell, University of Rhode Island, University of Remont, Worcester Polytechnic Institute and Worcester State University. So some pretty. Mr. Quincy said they're all great colleges. So.
You can add UMass Amherst.
Okay, UMass Amherst. And I know Mr. Christie is, you know, he's, he's participating in the meeting or on the meeting tonight. And so I think what we had, we struggled with is the students bringing in their college acceptances to the counseling department so we can publicize them. So he will, he already texted me, he, he will make sure that he's reminding students to bring those acceptances in.
Just email them. Most of them get them by email anyway.
Or email or whatever. Yeah, whatever was easiest for them. And that completes my report.
Good, Dr. Malone. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Mary while we're still on that? Okay, a great report and a lot of good information. Thank you. Going into ongoing business, FY twenty two budget discussion with Dr. Malone and Mr. Plunkett.
Sure, I'll just, you know, talk about, we plan to present to you our preliminary budget on January twentieth. And I think that would be, I think that's the third Wednesday of January when typically the governor would release his budget. I don't know if that will happen this year. Certainly, we all know what the current budget. So, but I will tell you that, you know, Mr. Plunkett and I are working on certainly providing a responsible budget. We want to remain financially responsible to the taxpayers. And, but we want to make sure we maintain a high quality education. And so those would be my comments. And if the school committee has any further comments or for the budget for Mr. Plunkett and I, I'd be happy to hear them. If not, we'll, we'll be prepared to bring you a budget, preliminary budget on January twentieth.
Sound good to everybody?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, good. Then moving on to the Student Opportunity Act. Dr. Malone?
Sure. Okay, so we, if you recall, the additional chapter seven and funding was allocated. Oh geez, that's my, sorry about that. That was my watch. I don't know why it started to talk to me, but anyhow, so if you remember that the Student Opportunity Act calls for all of us in the K to two community, tighten our focus on analyzing, addressing, reducing persistent gaps in learning opportunities, student achievement and post-secondary outcomes for students of color, students with disabilities, English learners and students from economically disadvantaged households. So our district was slated to get a whopping fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars. And so the Department of Education was requiring us to submit this plan. And then the pandemic hit and the dates kept getting pushed out. And we do have to submit this by January fifteenth and the Department of Education would like the school committees, all school committees to approve this. So the other piece of this would be that districts that would receive additional funding under this act would still want to conjuggle a few, or can jingle the, you know, LEA funds and grant monies and so on and so forth. Because the act doesn't assume that chapter seventy funds are the only funds that districts will use to support the plans. And it does state that the district S O A plan will include a description of how funds received pursuant to chapter seventy will be allocated among schools in the district. And so we provided this plan to, I did get it in the drive yesterday. You know, our plan is supporting the hiring of our Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion and Director of School Counseling. And we feel that, you know, so question was that we had to select subgroups and we selected our high needs, our students with disabilities and our low income student. And we provide, obviously we're not going to read all this to you, but we provide quite a bit of data. Mr. Cleary and I worked on this. The next question that we need to provide, you want to scroll down, please, Mike? If you could go down to question two, because this is pretty dense document. Yeah. You know, how we selected the program and even our rationale for what we're, we're using the funding to supplement for the Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion. And then the third, I think it's next is to be describe the program. And so we went into detail about the need for, for this particular position and what it's going to do for our district, our councils and ultimately most importantly for our students. And then next down, please. And then some budget items, how we would use some of the money. And then the last question is how we're going to monitor it. So we'd look at student achievement, high school completion for your graduation rate and high school completion and your dropout rate. So I'll take any questions. I know there's a lot to read and, you know, I tried to get it in the drive yesterday. I know everyone's busy. I'll take any questions.
So over, over what period of time is, is this, Mary? So we hire the director now with this fifty thousand dollars and then does that revert back to the budget next year? Or when do we think we'll get this, I guess? What's the timeframe on it?
Well, right now, we're not getting anything. But they're still requiring the plan. They didn't, they didn't fund it in the budget yet. So.
Oh, I get you.
Yeah. So, but they still wanted us to, the Department of Education is still requiring us to submit a plan. So that's what we're doing. And so of course, we, school committee already approved that position and we already have a person, which I've written in here, but. That's what we, initially when Mr. Cleary and I worked in this, that was, you know, initially this is what we were going to write it for. So we just continue on that path.
Anything from anybody else on this?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. This is, I see that one of the things is the student achievement on MCAS, but since we aren't going to have MCAS for a while.
Yeah.
It has to be viewed differently, right?
If, if the committee would, you know, if the will of the committee would be to approve this, I would appreciate that. The department has requested that the school committee approve it, if you, if it's the will of you to approve it.
Okay, if we have a, if we have a motion on the Student Opportunity Act?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Student Opportunity Act as reviewed.
I can.
Okay, is any discussion or questions?
One quick question. When does, when do we have to approve this by?
Hoping tonight because. Yeah, yeah, we have to submit to the Department of Education by the fifteenth.
Anything from anybody else? Seeing none. Michelle, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. DeForge?
Aye.
Mrs. Granger?
Sorry, aye.
Mr. Leoni?
Aye.
Mr. Quincy?
Aye.
Mrs. Reschut?
Aye.
Mrs. Simmons?
Aye.
That was, the vote was positive and it was unanimous. Thank you, everyone. This is, I think we're going to be hearing a lot more from this. So we'll see where we are. We have subcommittee reports. Any, any other ongoing business that I missed? Okay, item thirteen, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee Report. Mr. Leoni?
Okay, at our last meeting, it was a planning meeting and we did have some non-committee member participation. One attendee had concerns that my report to the school committee was not accurate. I reported that we had a great meeting and discussion, especially around what individual schools were doing and with their task forces and their classes. The attendee's opinion was that there were issues of support for teaching materials not included in the standards. And who was responsible for making sure that these things were being taught and the teachers were feeling supported in their efforts to do so. At our meeting, Brian Ulrich assured the attendee that they were being supported and that they were being encouraged and allowed to teach materials that were appropriate for, you know, inclusion. We also discussed the sexual harassment policy. As it was discussed at our last school committee meeting and then we met the next night and we discussed the sexual harassment committee and. the sexual harassment committee and the policy rather, and the committee agreed that we would like to make a formal request to the school committee that the advisory committee be allowed to review and suggest changes to that policy. I'm not sure how we go about doing that formally, but making it publicly now that that is something that our committee would like to do. We discussed professional development. Michelle Laflamme has a proposal that we will be submitting to the school committee for approval. We also discussed and finalized the survey that we have sent to everyone for approval. Ciara Latimer did an awesome job of transforming the survey into a quantifiable document. We feel it will give us an accurate assessment of how students and parents feel about the safety of the schools around racial and gender issues. Our next meeting is an open meeting on Thursday, this Thursday at 7:00 PM. And the agenda is posted and will be sent through email to anyone on our email list. Michelle Laflamme and Ciara Latimer will be presenting a discussion on action. So, so my only question is, how do we make a formal request to have the sexual harassment policy be reviewed by us and is that something that, that we can do?
Can I, can I make a comment on that?
Sure, please, Michelle.
I, I think several of us on the committee have spoken about trying to pull a a subcommittee together to really look at policy and how to break all the policy down to make sure that those things that we need to review on a more regular basis are really are covered there. And I don't, I think if we had a subcommittee, those, that would be into the public. I, I don't know what the regulations are around that. I, I'm a little uncomfortable with policy just being given outside of the school committee to make adjustments to. So I think if we had a subcommittee that is run by the school committee, there, there would be an opportunity for the public to be involved if, if they so choose to attend. Joyce, any thoughts on that?
Well, a policy subcommittee, which in this case you cannot have a majority of your committee, so you can only have three. But usually three is enough mind to do it. They are public posted meetings. They usually get pretty dry and a lot of discussion like Joe had in his other meeting. So, you know, it's, you get a lot of information from the state and from Massachusetts Association of School Committees as to what these things are. So they're all, the whole, the whole policy book is, you know, a living document essentially and it changes with the times. So we've been talking about this and need to move forward with it. What Jim is doing right now certainly shakes out some of the policies that you, that you wouldn't need to look at because they're pretty boilerplate. And like tonight, we're looking, there's, we have one in, we have file, hold on a minute, I'll give you the number. We have file number ACAB, which was done in 2012. And so there has been one in, in state. But then, of course, we're going to add all the, what's the number? I just lost it. The one that we need to integrate with that. So I don't know, Joe, if, if people want to send the committee some suggestions. But the advisory committee would be, would be elected school committee members.
Okay, so, so the request to have that would not be something that is even possible?
Anyone could say they have a problem with, with a policy and they want it reviewed. This one is, this one is definitely in progress right now.
Okay, so that if the committee wanted to just look at that and, and make suggestions. I mean, that's what it would do anyway. And if, if it took responsibility for it, it would just take and make suggestions for the school committee's approval, obviously. But, I mean, I think what Cheryl's saying is that policies should be reviewed by a subcommittee of the school committee and not by an advisory committee.
I think that's what I'm saying, that this is the responsibility of the school committee. And certainly taking, you know, suggestions or concerns from, you know, the community is appropriate in that, but there are, there are, you know, the, the. I don't want to, I don't want it to appear that we're putting the responsibility, our responsibility for the policy onto a working group that isn't part of the school committee. Does that make sense?
Yes. And, and if, it would mean that we really need to reestablish the subcommittee for policy review. And I don't know.
Yeah.
How you feel about that?
Well, I'm, I'm pretty much, we, I'm pretty much, I talked to Mary today about really renaming item 14 and just making it policy review report. Right now, we have sexual harassment on this and the review of the MASC Title IX policy. That's in front of the full school committee right now. We've established a policy review boilerplate that we, I can issue the number and types of policies that each of us will be responsible for reviewing. I thought that that might be more effective once we get through this round of, round of remote, I guess is the best way to put it. I, I don't, at this point, I don't see the real value of establishing a subcommittee review until we try to, at least for a year, do our sub, do our policy review according to the policy review, advise and consent policy that we passed just two months ago. So I, as far as we, input from diverse equity inclusion advisory subcommittee, as either, I forget either Joyce or Cheryl pointed out, we would take input from anywhere on any committee at any, at any time, whether it was individual, a member of a committee or not a member of a committee. So I think the availability for input under item 14 would be fine at any point.
Okay. I can, I can indicate to, during our open meeting, that the sexual harassment policy is up for review and that if anyone has any, any things that they would like to see put in there, change, whatever suggestions about the policy, that they should please let Michelle or I know and then we can bring it on to the, to the, to the next meeting.
That's terrific. That'd be great.
Can I just ask a question here? So when we set out, you know, I think, you know, the priority list of policies to be reviewed.
Right.
That's been a couple of years old, I'm thinking at this point, correct? I mean, I'm wondering if, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, that was just, that was just last year.
And how many of our members participated in that?
Of the current? Uh, I think of the list that I got, I got back the list from four of the six members.
Okay.
Four of the five members.
What?
I don't think I got a list, did I?
Because I, I'm not sure I participated in that, to be honest.
I don't think I did either. Did I get a list of things to, to review?
No, 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 no. Those, those lists weren't put out, which ones, we, we passed that in, we passed the actual. In September, October?
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, September, October, right.
Yeah.
Right, right.
I haven't reviewed anything yet.
No, the creation, the creation and codifying of the list of policies was a part of that approval. But to date, I, I have not issued you the list for review because we immediately went from there into sexual harassment and Title IX. But I can, I can issue that for the remainder of this school year if you like.
I guess what I was asking, I just wanted to make sure that every committee member submitted their list of primary, tertiary, because I, I don't remember doing that, to be honest. So if everybody else has done that, then I'm fine with what has been determined to be the majority. But I just, because I don't think I ever remember hearing, you know, I got five people's back and this is, this is how they shaked out or whatever. I was going to suggest maybe we want to relook at that because I thought it was a couple of years ago. But if it just happened last year and I'm not recalling correctly, then.
You know, 55 has not been kind to my brain. I would say, I would say the same. I would say the same thing. I think, I think it might be helpful if we kind of look at that again, Mr. Quincy, because I know we talked about it. I, I just, I don't remember like really saying like, these are the ones we should really review every year and these maybe every few. Yeah, so that might.
Even if you gave us back that list and we could review that list and work off of that, that might be helpful just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think that's, that is, I, I didn't go look, but I, I believe that is in our policy manual now. The list of the primary, secondary, and tertiary policies are a part of that policy. It's an addendum to that policy. And I think it's in our manual, so it should be on the website, although I've not gone to go look.
And I think we may have even had it in the minutes.
Yeah, but we can, we can, we can talk about it, yeah. If everybody gets a chance to go look at that and then we can certainly talk about it at the next meeting. That's, that's fine.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Thank you, because all these years seem to be blending together. Honestly can't remember when we did it.
If we could get back to, I know this sounds a terrible way to say, if we get back to sexual harassment. The, Joe, we have information from, from our lawyers on how to do this. This is a very legal policy that needs to be to the state of the law. So, and we have information from Massachusetts Association of School Committees on how to proceed on this. I think there's a lot of things in that, in that policy that are going to be very important that they have to be right to the letter of the law. So it's, it's a big, it's a big policy to work on. And I have to say I've read half of it, but I don't think I got through the whole thing. Some of it's very hard to read. Many things like putting the legal referrals, references out of the, out of the, out of the language in the middle and putting it on the bottom, I think, would be really helpful when we look at this. And does anybody want to take a stab at, at, since we don't have a, since we don't have a subcommittee? And then I think we need to have to put the bullying in with it. So if anybody is willing to look at that and come up with something to kick off with.
So I'm, I'm happy to do that because I read them through them last night and I found things in. So ours I find a little bit lacking and that may just be the age of it.
Oh yeah, it's twelve, eight, eight years ago, you know?
You know, I really liked MASC, how they, they just really opened it back up. That MASC opened it more to harassment and then sort of defined a subsection of sexual harassment. I like that a lot. I also liked that they specified when and where, when and to whom it applies. So like, it applies on the bus, it applies when you're in school, it applies when you're playing a game. Those things, but I also did not like, and I think Jim mentioned this before, there's some pretty wordy paragraphs in there that need to be cleaned out or whatnot. So I'm happy to take sort of a combination of our policy, MASCs and our lawyers and sort of structure a little bit and if that is agreeable. Just, you know, I'll note where each sort of reference came from. I'm happy to do that. It's a lot of copy and paste.
That'd be good.
I don't, I don't see anybody jumping up and down, but go ahead.
Can I just say a few things? I, I agree with Jonathan. I do like the MASC that it's readable compared to what came from the attorney's office was even more lengthy. There's little bits and pieces in here that, you know, I think need some tweaking. Something like, you know, conduct has the purpose, that some harassment conduct has the purpose or effect of unreasonably interfering with the student's performance. I'm not sure what reasonable harassment is. So those kind, those kinds of things. So Jonathan, if you're going to be doing this, you know, I'd be happy to send you some of my notes that I made on here as well.
Well, if anybody wants to send Jonathan some, but, you know, what their ideas are because it's obviously going to be a whole committee thing.
Right, or even let Jonathan take a stab and then everyone provide their notes, whatever Jonathan thinks is most helpful.
Yeah, I think sort of, I, I would take notes because I'm guessing there's going to be some commonalities there. So.
Sure.
However you want to do it. I'll probably work on it, you know, the next, well, we'll be meeting in two weeks. You know, probably this weekend I'll work on it so we can get back to you guys and quickly as possible. Go from there.
Do we have any problems with that? Does everybody agree?
Sounds like a good.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to, as, as an approach, when I, when I read the the policy that came out of MASC, obviously I've spoken at length about a number of issues I had with it, but I, mostly outside of the detail work involved, I want to talk about the approach and, and usefulness of the policy. I mean, we, we do address a lot of the issues in, you know, student conduct on buses, prohibition of hazing, hazing exhibit, bullying prevention, you know, all that sort of stuff. And one aspect that I, I like with the way that our policies are currently constructed is that it, it basically takes the approach that, you know, everybody understands that you can't treat people like crap. Right? You just can't, and the, the MASC policy, the policy tries to delineate all the, all the ways that you could do that. And it reminds me very much of Justice Potter Stewart in 64, when they were talking about pornography and free speech. And he said, "I shall not today attempt further to define the kinds of material I understand to be embraced, but I know it when I see it." And I, I like the fact that our policy is readable and basically says that if you are sexually harassed or if there, somebody is being hazed, if somebody is being bullied, we don't go into length about defining what those things are because I think pretty much people know what those things are. We deal with who do you talk to and how do you address the situation? And to the, when I look at the MSC, MASC policy, it's a bunch of P Y A, as far as I'm concerned, to try to accommodate whatever the letter of the law is. And if we get to the seriousness of some of the offenses, then you're clearly going to have to be dealing with the, you know, the Title IX director and the police and the superintendent's office to deal with it at that level. So for me, it's really a matter of how the committee wants to approach it. I like a less definitive approach. But, you know, it's going to be however everybody wants it to be. We certainly could consolidate, you know, our policies into one policy on conduct. That might be somewhat useful because they are kind of all over the place. And these are all important policies, but I think we'll have to all think, and I don't want to decide that tonight, but I'd like to have all the committee members to think about what they'd like to come out of this. You know, we, all these policies are trying to control certain types of behavior, which are very tough to control. And probably the, the biggest thing that you need to do to improve a situation. improve a situation is to somehow accommodate people, to help them confront it when they see it, because, you know, administrators and whatnot don't see this, and you can't always count on the victims coming for help, but the kids in the building or other people that are inside the building, to give them what they need to stand up against it as a group is really what we're trying to grow as the student body. So, everybody could kind of think of where they are with that and what kind of approach they like to take, I think it will make my job and Jonathan's job and everybody's job easier, but in the end, when I look at the policy manual, I try to think as a parent and a school committee member, and not so much as a, perhaps a district attorney might look at the same document. So, I, it'll be interesting to see where everybody is, if you could, to sort of think on that and let me know where you guys are next week, I, I'm very interested to hear.
And Joe, do you have the, the MASC version and the lawyer version as well?
I, I don't know, are they, are they in our, on the drive? I have the, I have the MASC policy, yep, I, I have them, yep.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure, so you could at least bring those to, you know, the DEI committee and give them some reference on what we'll be starting to work on, is what, you know, what we'll be using as far as we're concerned.
Yep.
Maybe helpful, Joe, I'm just thinking it may be helpful to hold off on DEI reviewing until we get a little bit more of a cohesive policy coming out of us, as opposed to giving these three and kind of saying, let's look at this, because it's a lot, I think, you know, even for us to start looking.
Yeah, I think, you know, my announcement at the meeting will be that we can, we can review those and, and make suggestions and tell them exactly what the, the school committee is doing with respect to that, but that it will not be our responsibility to, to review this policy and, and to make it acceptable to our school committee.
Right, I just think as a matter of law, that can't be the case.
Yeah, okay, I, I agree, that's fine, yep.
Okay, all right.
Just, if I could just, I, I can't find that list, that policy, tertiary, secondary, primary, if anyone has it, or if someone can tell me where to find it so I can print it off, or if Michelle could put, send it to us by email if she knows where it is, that would be really great.
Yeah.
I, I can do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Michelle. So, does this get us started on this huge project here? Thanks, Jonathan, you're brave. We appreciate it. So, then do we, can we move on and leave this where, operating where it is?
I think we can.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. I have no notes for tonight. Are there any other topics for discussion not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting? Always tricky, and don't know of any. Number 17 is communications.
Hey, here I am.
Here you are, it's not long.
Thursday, January 7th, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee, 7:00 PM via Zoom, Link's agenda has been posted. Wednesday, January 13th, is our CPAC meeting, 7:00 PM. CPAC is Special Education Parent Advisory Council, is that correct? Advisory Committee?
Good job.
Yes.
All right, cool. And certainly open to every, anyone who wants to attend, if special needs students or not. Monday, January 18th, no school, an observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. Wednesday, January 20th, was a half day of school, grades nine through 12, that has been canceled, as noted earlier this evening. Wednesday, January 20th, school committee meeting, 6:30 PM here on Zoom. Thursday and Friday, January 21st and 22nd, also half days that were canceled, and Friday, January 22nd, half day of school, grades preschool through 12 for, wait.
Sorry, you didn't delete the exam, Jonathan.
Half day of school for professional development.
Yeah, thank you, sorry.
Is that correct? There we go.
Yes, thank you.
And that is all I have for announcements this evening.
Thank you very much. I would entertain, if nothing else needs to come up or any other questions on what we've done tonight, at 8:14 PM on January the 5th, good kickoff to January, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Can I ask a question before we do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, so, Dr. Malone, you mentioned the meetings with the Shirley Town Boards, will we be getting Zoom information for those meetings?
Yes, I spoke to Mike McGovern today, so I don't know if he's going to send it out because I, I think they're participating in Zoom, these are their regularly scheduled meetings, or we'll have a separate, but I will get it too, either way.
And I'm sorry, you said January 19th was with the FINCON.
Finance Committee. Yeah.
And the 25th was the BOS.
With the selectmen. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sorry to prolong.
It's okay, no problem. Do we have a motion to adjourn? I did not hear one.
Motion to adjourn.
I don't know why suddenly everybody's shy, but go ahead, guys.
Joe, I think moved and Cheryl seconded.
And Cheryl seconded. Michelle, would you do one final roll call for us tonight, please?
Mr. DeForge.
Aye.
Mrs. Granger.
Aye.
Mr. Leoni.
Aye.
Mr. Quincy.
Aye.
Mrs. Reschutz.
Aye.
Mrs. Simmons.
Aye.
That was unanimous, and we are adjourned at 8:15. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night, and happy new year.